And let us call the order, the board of supervisors meeting for Newtown Township, May 12th, 2021. As usual, we'll start with a moment of silence and during that moment of silence, I'd like for you to remember all those have been affected by this horrible virus and their families. And those who are on the front lines, the doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, all who answer their call to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, the supermarket workers, food servers, just to name a few. And here in our township, our management, our administrative staff, our public works, together they keep our township running. Let us also support our local businesses the best we can, and please remember to tip those generously. Most of all, let us treat people with respect and kindness, even those who we may disagree with every once in a while. Together as a community, we will be stronger when this is all over. If you could bow your heads. Join the board in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have no special actions. We will go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a comment of anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise their hand. I will call on you. Okay, seeing none. Want minor approvals? Michael was, geez, I don't want to mispronounce your name, but Michael Eagle Scout, Storm Drain Stencils along Sycamore Street. Michael, are you here?
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
Why don't you pronounce your last name since I couldn't get it right?
It's pronounced Wisnewski.
Wisnewski, thank you, sir. Why don't you explain to the board what, what your project is?
All right, well, first I want to ask if everyone has the materials I sent out. It's not a big deal if you don't. It's just in case you had any questions or wanted to look up something at, it would be there. But anyways, thank you for having me. My name's Michael Wisnewski. I'm a resident of Newtown. I'm in troop 99 as a life scout. And my project is the second phase of a project that has already been approved and completed in 2018. So my project benefits both the community and Parks and Recs. It's educational, meaning it's meant to inform the public about staying clean, not polluting, and keep mainly keeping the waterways clean. And the project encompasses labeling and stenciling the storm drains on North Sycamore Street to do so. And this is from Jefferson Street to Washington Avenue and Swamp Road, so that area. The first section has already been done by A.J. Fuer in this second part. I've already spoken to the business owners over there to inform them of the project and what it entails. So they already know about, you know, the main the, the project that's going on. And I've talked to the EAC, Matt Sippen, and some leaders in my troop about the project. And I've gotten their, all their approvals already. And I came here to get yours and wondering if you had any questions or if you are ready to approve or not.
Board have any questions for Michael?
Yes, Mr. Wisnewski, thank you very much for taking on this project. I, I like the designs. There are three different designs that you have. Are you going to use all of them or you're going to pick just one or?
Thanks for your question. I narrowed it down to just two. I have the two here. I don't, I don't know if you can see it with the camera. But I did that, you know, because of how, you know, certain conditions are needed to make a stencil to leave it up to the designer so that they, it, you know, it doesn't fall apart or it's not fragile or anything like that. So whichever would be best for the conditions is going to be used in.
And, and this is going to be a special paint that'll hold up under the environment, you know? Like the other ones, I, I see are still in good condition. That are, have already been there. I like the one with the, the two fishes. What are they, porpoises or just fishes? Two fish?
I, I know specific type of fish, but just a general, you know, basic design.
So the two, the two, just the two stock images that you showed us are just examples, basically.
Well, yeah, they're, they're an example, but, and this is the, the reference picture that I got. So that's sort of what I based it off of, but I want to keep it simple because the paint I'm using is not great for details. It's great for staying on there for a long time. So with that, it's probably just going to be the outline of the fish. It's going to be a shaded color of it. There aren't going to be like any details like eyes or anything like.
Okay, I'm sure it's going to look great. Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Michael, thank you for thinking of the township in your project. I think it's a great idea, what you're doing. Being the father of an Eagle Scout from troop 99, I'm really excited that troop 99 is still, you know, standing up and helping out Newtown Township. So, great idea. Thank you and good luck and you have my support for sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was going to offer my thanks as well, and I think John took both of my questions, but one was about the paint mode. The other was about the stencil, but you're going to have the stencils professionally made? Are you going to make them or?
Yes, so this isn't, this isn't a final design. I'm going to take it to a designer and a stencilist and they're going to refine it so that it works as a stencil, but that's, it's, that's what it's going to look like generally. It's going to outline.
Thank you. You, you're, you're better artist than I am.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Uh, Michael, thank you for your dedication to the township and trying to promote more environmental friendly ideas and also information to also just have people informed about treating our world much better. So thank you for that. I encourage your troop to continue to do good work and, and hopefully there's another project for the environment that you can do after this one. We look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Michael, this is a great project. When do you expect for it to be completed? Do you have any time estimated?
Um, I'm thinking like around, you know, beginning of summer-ish, so maybe like July.
Okay, great. Yeah, it'll look nice there during the summertime. Excellent. Uh, Mr. Sanders, do we have to form a motion for, for this to be done?
Uh, yeah, I'd recommend that the board make a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project for Michael Wisnewski regarding storm drain stencils along Sycamore Street in conjunction with his presentation this evening.
I'll make a motion of proof.
Okay, do I have a second?
I can.
Motion a second. Any further questions from the board? Any from the public on this project? Okay, seeing none of call the question. All those in favor? I opposed, this is five zero. Michael, your project is approved. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Take care now.
All right, you too. Uh, one question I did have before I, you know, leave entailed on how you're going to sign it because usually, you know, without COVID, we have it, so I get a signature. Uh, but I don't know how it's going to work digitally. Is there a way you can somehow digitally sign my project?
Well, can he drop the paperwork off at the municipal building and somebody be along to sign that?
Yeah, absolutely. You can just drop it off at the municipal building. I'll sign it and then we'll contact you when you can, when it's completed.
All right, that's, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Take care now.
All right. Have a great day.
You too. Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, next we have reports of committees, boards and commissions. We have the planning commission, Mr. Fidler.
You're on mute, Alan.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here to give you a quick synopsis of our May 4th, 2021 meeting. We had two items on our agenda that evening. The first one was under land development. This was for Fred Bean's revised final plan at 10 North Sycamore Street. Here the applicant proposes to revise the expansion plan, which had been approved in January of 2018. The revision includes a reduction in the showroom addition from forty-five hundred and seven square feet to thirteen hundred and twenty-one square feet and increasing the setback for the new facade. The dealership currently has 10 display parking spaces in the front. And this will again be reduced to eight parking spaces. The commission recommended that board approve this revision subject to conditions, including compliance with the review letters of Remington and Vernick and CPS Engineering. Our second item of business that evening was to begin the discussion of reviewing the permitted uses in the LI and the OLI zoning district. Township planner Michelle Fountain provided an overview of the current zoning in the Newtown Business Commons and led to discussion on possible expansion of those uses with a goal of an enhancing revenue to the township. Either by bringing in new high wage businesses or by creating a more attractive environment for the current business tenants and possibly for nearby residences. We've created a preliminary list of uses to be considered and explored further, including expanding eating place and eating place takeout focusing on casual dining, service businesses such as salons and dry cleaners, a possible entertainment overlay for venues like movie theater, bowling alley uses and shared workspace uses for office and laboratories. We discussed different uses that are not currently defined in our ordinance such as at all, as such as technological businesses like server farms and indoor hydroponic farming. We also briefly discussed the possibility of adding high density residential uses. Township does not have many high density residential opportunities and this might work well to provide housing for younger people. With the addition of the residential housing, we would also need to consider residential amenities like enhanced walkability. We considered that some uses may be objectionable to close residential neighborhoods. Uh, so we've also begun to discuss an overlay for uses that might generate noise or nighttime activities. Miss Fountain will be exploring these possibilities additions to learn whether they have been successful elsewhere in the county and surrounding areas. We hope to refine the use list, possibly discuss it with the Bucks County Planning Commission before we begin to explore the possible changes to performance standards for these new potential uses as well as for the existing uses. And again, this was the very beginning of our introduction to the discussion, so it was free ranging to some degree, but I think Michelle did come away with some of the consensus opinions of the planning commission and those that were able to attend via Zoom. So have any questions? I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Alan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of questions, Alan. On Fred Beans, I guess, I mean, I didn't look at the plans in detail, but I guess the original plan had the building coming way up to the front without any cars parked in front of it. Now they want to put the building further back, still have spaces along the sidewalk and only eight spaces instead of 10. Is that one of the major differences?
I, I, I think there was some showroom space outside the showroom as proposed in 2018. As the applicant explained to the commission, uh, the reason for the reduction is that Ford Motor Company has not ponied up with the amount of amenity support um, that the dealerships would need to create the showroom of the size and scale that had been originally approved. Mr. Beans, being as frugal as he usually is, determined that, you know, by reducing the footprint of the building um, and moving it off of Sycamore Street, uh, the township can be well served. And again, that, I guess, and a reduction of a showroom space means that there'll be a little more activity outdoors.
Okay, uh, the building looks pretty nice, modern looking building. And I, I know some people like the old style type, but, you know, I think it looks good. Uh, I, I think along that area, there's currently no side, no sidewalk right in front of Fred Beans. Is that correct? And, and will there be a sidewalk added from this new plan?
I believe, John, I believe there's a sidewalk that was created with the auto body remodeling that took place and it extended southward towards the showroom lot. I believe, and, and Mr. Marshall is here representing Mr. Beans, he can probably check that plan, but I believe the sidewalk will continue uh, down to connect to the intersection by Team Logic. But again, my, I don't have the plans in front of me to be able to refer to that. Maybe Mr. Marshall can address that if you do direct a question to him.
Okay, um, Mr. Marshall, is there a sidewalk currently there? I, I was looking Google Maps and maybe that's an old photo, so. I, I just don't recall driving around there, whether there was or not at this moment.
Oh, I don't believe there is one at the present time before.
Don, you're on mute, Don. Take yourself off mute.
Am I there now?
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the sidewalk continues all the way to the end of the Fred Beans Ford. All of the, there's virtually no change to any of the public improvements from the original plan. The real, the only real change in this application is, is the scale of the dealership building. And I'll let Scott Mill when we're actually up next, uh, answer any specific question, but I think that sidewalk's already built, to be honest with you, all the way down. Now, Alan said all the way down to the corner. I don't, do not believe that there's sidewalk in front of the last building that runs from Swamp Road up to the Beans property, but the sidewalk has been continued all the way through the, past the Beans property.
Right, so people will get a chance to walk and see the stencils if there is any over there.
Absolutely. And, and hopefully, hopefully we'll enjoy the changes to the Body Shop Building, which we believe was very much inconsistent with the Sycamore Street uh, vision that you had for the revitalization of it. That, of course, was being done completely by Mr. Beans and not by Ford. Consequently, that represents that architectural change. Ford has a lot of say in what you can do with their buildings.
All right. Okay, thanks very much. Uh, Mr. Fidler, I have another question. You mentioned about the business area overlay rezoning and so on, uh, that there might be some objectionable uses there. And I just, I know that the dog daycare center, uh, a lot of residents were up in arms against that. So I, and you mentioned, I hope that the new uses will be a benefit to residents. And one of those, I think you mentioned, uh, walkability, uh, which means enhanced, you mentioned enhanced workability. And I guess that hopefully that means, uh, again sidewalks. I hate to be a stickler for sidewalks, but uh, I've talked to many residents who would like to walk through that business area to get to different things that I know there might be a daycare and other, if you're going to have other amenities there. Walking through might be a, a good idea. Uh, so I know I've often mentioned the Newtown Brewery, which doesn't have a sidewalk in front of it. I know they're now members of the Newtown Business Commons Association. So I had talked to the president of that association about sidewalks and he mentioned some problems that have nothing really, I don't know if it has anything to do with zoning. This is like private property and you have to get permission and uh, from the owners. How, how is that going to be done with, to enhance walkability?
Um, John, in, in terms of answering your first question regarding the uses that may be obnoxious to residential neighbors, uh, we listened to the doggy daycare application and heard the residential concerns. And the commission understood that, you know, by creating a possible overlay district where only those uses are allowed to be implemented would be in the central core of the business commons, insulating the residential peripheral areas, um, might be a concept that's, you know, an easier sell to the municipality and the residents as well. In terms of the sidewalk issue, yes, walkability is something that we've heard about for many years here in the township. And the township has been successful when there is land development revisions to an existing property that those subdivision plans require the sidewalks. The sidewalks, I assume, are in the right of way, so it's technically not necessarily under the complete control of the property owner. They can control outside of the right of way to whatever degree the township permits. But anything that could possibly take place within the right of way, the township has the ability to do that. It, it can be expensive to put walking trails in connection to existing sidewalks. And this is one of the things the Business Commons said is, is very difficult to convince property owners that it's in everyone's best interest to add a sidewalk when there doesn't seem to be any financial gain for their particular business other than the indirect benefit of their employees as well as the residents and the users of the sidewalks uh, to safely passage from one point to the next via foot. So yeah, it, it's, it's been an issue, John, that we faced for a long time and hopefully we can get some action.
Can I interject here before we get too far into the weeds, as someone used to say before? Uh, the sidewalk issue isn't something new. It's been going, going for about 25 years now. Uh, we did have a planner in the past that did devise a plan. I'm sure Michelle probably has it, which put, I believe, macadam walkways throughout the, throughout the commons so that people can walk. And now with the revision of the commons, if there are going to be more restaurants, more, more activity, uh, of course, we would want people to walk either to a food truck or somewhere else. But Alan is right, we, we would have to get permission from some of the, the business owners. And also when something is redone, if a building is being redone or being revamped, I, I think we've made a provision that whoever that developer may be has to put a sidewalk across the frontage of their building. So hopefully we can have a continuous walkway going through. But this is something that would have to be discussed with the Business Association and also the business owners that are within there. So this is, this has been an ongoing issue for, again, like I said, 25, maybe even further, 30 years, some, something like that. Which, again, it should have been done in the first place, but I guess there weren't a lot of people that were walking around the commons 30 years ago and now people do want to walk and they don't want to walk in, in the streets. So that's, uh, I guess that's something that we could discuss with Michelle when Michelle is available at a meeting.
Well, I, I, I would suggest that the, if, you know, Michelle is going to the planning commission talking about these things, uh, maybe the planning commission should invite somebody. I know that Mary Donaldson is, is involved with the Business Commons, but maybe some other representatives as well can attend and we can a, ask them about these issues and see how they feel about it.
Anyone, anyone can attend any meeting. As a matter of fact, we do have someone on here from the Business Association that might be able to pass the word on and, and maybe.
I know, I just mentioned Mary Donaldson.
Well, I see Matt Peters who's on here also, not, not just Mary Donaldson, so.
Matt Peters is a member of the Newtown Business Association. I'm talking about the Newtown Business Commons.
Can we move, can we move on?
Sure, let's move on.
Excellent, John. Uh, board members, I will go to Mr. Fisher.
Hello, good evening again, everyone. Had very brief report this evening. The May, the May meeting of the Joint Municipal Zoning Council was uh, canceled last Thursday, uh, so I don't have anything to report from there. The, the Harb Committee has, has not had an agenda item for a couple of months. Uh, so they haven't, there are no report there. Uh, Finance Committee will meet, uh, the day before our next meeting, so I will give a more complete, complete report then. Uh, I just wanted to say two things, two other things. One is that I just want to express my thanks to our professional staff and especially Leanna around the, all the work and the extra work with the, with the road program, uh, with the sewer replacement and some of the repairs that have to be done in Nob Hill and. Uh, with the um, the sewer replacement and some of the repairs that have to be done in Nob Hill and Devonshire. Uh, it's been two or maybe three years in a row where we've had to shift around the the road program and the bidding process. I know that's uh, a lot to do and when you add in grants and when you add in plan reviews and when you add in permit reviews. Uh, that keeps you busy, so I just want to express my thank you.
Thank you.
And last thing, I just want to mention next Tuesday's election day, please don't forget to vote.
Mr. Fisher, I I'd also like to uh, thank Leanna for all the work she does and. Uh, the hard work she puts in for the uh, the trails also, which she doesn't get enough credit for. And um, sometimes even gets uh, a little bit uh. Disparaging remarks made to her, but she's doing an excellent job. We couldn't ask for a better. Better engineer, a better person to be doing what she does. Thanks, Leanna, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mac, you're up.
Okay, um, I attended the Bucks County uh, Tax Collection Committee. Uh, as you know, I was a liaison, I'm now. An official delegate who can vote and be counted for forum at those meetings. Which the chairperson was very happy to see. Uh, Mr. Joseph Lizero from uh, Keystone Collections. Gave an update on E eight, E I T collections. Uh, he mentioned that I think the fifth quarter or whatever it is. Uh, really uh, made up for any deficiencies in the collection. Uh, I don't know all the details and I don't know if uh, Mr. Lewis has anything further about that. But um, of interest to Newtown and maybe he talked about. The uncollected E I T from residents employed by Philadelphia companies. Some residents may be paying Philadelphia taxes. Whereby, whereas they're working at home now, they should be paying Newtown E I T taxes, which are much, much less. Than what they would be paying as a Philadelphia company. And this has, this is of concern. Uh, so the uh, Tax Collection Committee is gonna come out with some kind of. Uh, notice that we can send out to residents. That who are in this situation, that they should check and be sure that their company. Has listed their place of business now, where they're working from, to be Newtown, so their taxes will be much lower. Uh, there's some details I don't have to get into right now about that. But uh, we should be getting that correspondence from the committee sooner or later. And that's all I have to report, thank you.
Mr. Mac, uh, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the park and rec report. Uh, we have only a few spots left in the six-week summer camp. So register soon. Some upcoming programs and for park and rec, we have Schools Out Art Workshop. There's a after-school, so much fun. So is S E W, to give you a clue what that's about. Uh, there's a grilling with Chef Joseph. There's learning to skate and there's bead weaving. So pre-registration is required for all those programs. Newtown Fund dot com if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oxley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, very short from the E D C. Um, we had a, had a meeting uh, last week, Thursday. Uh, we discussed a few things that will be coming down uh, the pipeline to present to the board, so. I'm going to um, wait and then have um, memo presented to the board um, later in the future, so. Um, look out for that and um. I did stop by the N F A, um, first time I've ever been there and I got a tour. And I was really blown away by the history of that uh, building and. Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the passion that I um, received from. Uh, some of the individuals there that were just explaining to me how they enjoy it. And what they do and all volunteer and all the history around, like, it's basically a family business, so. Um, it's been pretty cool to see all that, so I just want to share that part in terms of um. Stopping by there and sitting with those folks for a little bit and talking, so um, that's all I have for uh, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, moving very long. We have no public hearing tonight. We have land development, which is Fred Beans Ford of Newtown. Uh, Mr. Sander, I'll throw this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think it might be best, um, uh, my suggestion would be to, that. I frame a motion um, for the board's consideration and then we enter into a discussion. I know, uh, as as we know from earlier in the meeting. Uh, Mr. Marshall is here, Mr. Mill, uh, and several others representing uh, Fred Beans this evening. Um, is that appropriate, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, if the board is of a mind, this would be a motion to approve the revised. Final land development plan for Fred Beans Ford, uh, that is Newtown Family Partnership L P. Subject to the applicant's compliance with the Remington and Vernick Engineers Review Letter of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. The Remington and Vernick Traffic Review Letter of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And the C K S Engineers Planning Review Letter of March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. In addition, the applicant will warrant that the revised plan is A D A compliant. And further, that all fees and costs associated with the township's review of this revised final plan. If any, will be paid in full prior to the signing of final plans and they're being recorded.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. Motion is second, uh, now we'll open up to questions and discussion from the board. Anyone?
This was a recommendation from the planning commission as well. To approve this subject of the condition. Am I correct?
That, that's correct, Mr. Fisher. Um, uh, Mr. Shankman, uh, the uh, planning commission solicitor. Framed the uh, the general motion, uh, and that comes from the planning commission recommendation, yes.
Are we gonna hear any of the conditions? Right, you're on mute, Dave.
Those were the conditions, Mr. Chairman. Um, the uh, compliance with those three letters. Uh, the A D A compliance and the payment of all outstanding fees.
Okay, I did.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mr. Chairman, if I might, there there are conditions on the previously granted variance and they're all included. We are not changing any of the conditions of the original approval except for this modification. I don't know if that's helpful.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Everyone stay safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, take care.
You too. Take care.
Okay, moving on to the engineers' report. Leanna?
Yep, um, so tonight, uh, we have the resolution for the D C E D watershed, watershed restoration fund grant. The township is applying for funding for um, stream bank stabilization projects in the Clark Nature Center. Um, so this is part of the township's M S four permit, so this um, grant would hopefully fund those um. Those improvements in order to meet our permit requirements, so tonight we're just looking at the resolution to authorize the submission of that grant.
Okay, so do we need a motion for the D C E D watershed restoration fund grant resolution, Mr. Solicitor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the D C E D watershed restoration fund grant.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. I'll, I'll second. Have a motion is second. Any questions from the board?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, I have no objection to this, obviously, it needs to be done and. The grant is for two hundred ninety-nine thousand something dollars and I see that the. Preliminary cost estimate is three hundred forty-four thousand, which. Doesn't include the cost of per- permits, et cetera. Uh, where would the extra money come from? Is, did we make a note of that? That's needed for this?
Yep, so that, the engineering and inspection line item would include the cost to do the design permits, just the. The costs of permitting that's excluded would be any fees for permits. Um, so, you know, they can be clarified.
It still costs forty, fifty thousand dollars more than the money that we're asking for, the grant money. I was wondering where that extra fifty thousand or so is gonna come from.
Mr. Lowish, you have an?
Oh, I mean, okay, yep, sorry, I misunderstood your question. Um, the township.
Most likely it would come from rec capital. In future budgets, if we were to be awarded the grant, we would allocate this from from uh, either rec capital or from the general fund.
Okay, we have funds for that, I imagine. I guess.
We we would allocate for them in future budgets, yes.
Uh, the other question I had is I noticed some of the trails there, uh, the blue trail. Gets pretty close to the stream bank. And I was wondering if this project would uh, have to interfere with the trails by, you know, maybe. Cutting into the trail or something like that. Do you know anything about that? I mean, it looks like it would be a pretty big project.
Yeah, we're, we're not anticipating affecting the trails at this point. Um, you know, what we're applying for right now is just sort of a, a small phase of the overall, you know, restoration that would be needed, so. Um, you know, based on the initial, you know, look out there, I I don't anticipate us interfering with the trails that are out there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes, I had one, one or two. See that there's a phase one and a phase two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're, we're just doing phase one at this point?
At this point, yeah, just based on the maximum amount of this grant that we can request. Um, you know, I split it up into phases so that hopefully we can, you know, seek out additional funding as well. But basically, you know, we wanted to to maximize this grant request that we could.
Great, and and that forty-four thousand, almost forty-five thousand, that would be basically the township's match of that grant.
Correct, yep, there's a fifteen percent match requirement.
We have some time to spend that, is it, does it have to be spent this year or is it a multi-year?
Uh, typically, once, you know, I I don't anticipate this being awarded for, you know, probably until later this year. And then typically, there's a few years, you know, once the agreements are signed, usually it's a three-year agreement, so we do have time.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have the motion in the second. Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, Leanna.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report, uh, I would request a motion from the board to approve the written decision. Uh, granting the application of Jennifer Bonfrisco for a P R D variance at eight Adrian Place in the writings of Newtown. Uh, for uh, the approval of a uh, in-ground swimming pool and paver deck. As granted by the township, uh, by the Board of Supervisors at its last meeting.
Do I have such a motion? So moved.
So moved.
Oh, we have a lot, okay. Dennis and then John, I guess, okay.
All right.
All right, uh, any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
This is for one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, second item on our uh, on our agenda this evening. Uh, is the ratification of a professional services agreement with planner David Babbitt. Uh, for the Wawa zoning hearing board hearing. Uh, if the board recalls at its last meeting. Uh, the board authorized our firm to oppose. Uh, the variances that were being requested by Provco for the Wawa proposed on Lower Silver Lake Road. Um, the hearing at that, at that time, the hearing was scheduled for May sixth. Uh, so I had to take quick action. Uh, I consulted with the uh, attorneys in my office. Uh, and um, I I was recommended to Mr. David Babbitt. Uh, with whom I have worked briefly, but with whom members of my firm have worked recently. Uh, including uh, having a uh, positive uh, decision. Uh, in a zoning hearing regarding signage. Uh, and I knew Mr. Babbitt's um, qualifications. Uh, from seeing him um, testify previously, he is a uh, very uh, strong and self-assured. Uh, witness with plenty of experience. Um, and uh, when I spoke to Mr. Lewis. Um, we received at least administrative authorization to enter into a proposal with Mr. Babbitt. Um, that has been provided uh, to the board, uh, and I would ask this evening for a motion to ratify. The professional services agreement with Mr. Babbitt. Uh, for his testimony as a professional planner, his expert testimony. Uh, at the upcoming uh, Provco Wawa hearing scheduled for June third, two thousand twenty-one.
Such a motion?
So made a motion.
Oh, take your time. Who made the motion?
I did, I think.
Okay, John and then Dennis?
Yes, you can put me down in a sec.
Okay, any questions from the board on this motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just had a clarification that said in one of his. Um, duties that he might perform, he can have meetings and or telephone conferences with township officials. Uh, would that uh, include the uh, supervisors? I mean, can I give him a call or? Mr. Sander?
Mr. Sander, I I I've never ha- heard this being done in the past, but it's not, not to say it can't be done. Mr. Sander, you're.
Very interesting, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that that was my initial reaction. Uh, I have not known that to happen, however. Um, I reached out to Mr. Babbitt and said, uh, if a supervisor or supervisors was interested in speaking with you about this. Uh, would uh, would you be uh, um, welcome to that? And he said, absolutely. Uh, yes, by all means, he would welcome uh, discussion with any uh, member of the Board of Supervisors uh, about this matter. Um, so there's your answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
I I I would just like to interject that I I think that it shouldn't be just one supervisor. Maybe it could be a Zoom call with two supervisors. Uh, just as far as, you know, we don't wanna, we don't want a one word against the other type of situation. Let's uh, you know, John, if you wanna be that person, that's fine, is, would anyone else like to be in on the conversation if anything is. Uh, gone over with with our planner?
I'd like to.
Okay, all right, so schedule something, uh, uh, Mr. Mac and Mr. Oxley to uh, you know, ask questions of the planner.
Who who's gonna schedule it? Is this would be a using the township's official Zoom account or?
Wow.
We have to pay our own way.
I guess, well.
We could have a, I'm sorry, we could have a conference call.
We're a conference call, yeah.
Necessarily, I can set up a conference call using my conference uh, line.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We'll be in contact, uh, we'll be in contact with Mr. Sander, right?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, sounds good.
Uh, there's a motion in a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion is second for to uh. Ratification of the professional services agreement with David Babbitt Planner for the Wawa zoning hearing, we're hearing. Okay, any further questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that five?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, that concludes our report this evening.
Excellent. Uh, Manager's Report, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is four million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Plan expiration before the board with no action required, and we have uh, Chief Hearn here to give his annual report. Evening, Chief.
Evening, sir, evening, board members.
Hello, Chief.
But twenty twenty-one police report, uh, we documented one thousand seven hundred and eight calls for service. Documented just under twenty-three thousand miles of patrol. We had twenty arrests for the month of April, thirteen were DUI related. Free for narcotics violations, two. Free for narcotics violations, two fraud, one retail theft, and one disorderly conduct. There were fifteen new cases referred to detectives and eight crime scenes processed. Couple notable jobs, if you recall, last month I indicated about a sexual assault where a male was apprehended and we had an outstanding warrant for a second male. That second male, uh, fled the country and fled to South Korea with the assistance of the FBI and our detectives. Um, he was located in South Korea and he will be extradited back to the United States. That's in the process right now. Um, on four twenty-two, there was a, uh, overdose and CPR and an Narcan deployment by police officer Mystic was administered with a successful revival and a transportation to St. Mary's. Uh, forty-two traffic crashes this past month, one hundred ninety-four traffic citations and two hundred and twenty-one warnings were issued. We had two truck enforcement details, total in tenants' inspections, above the three citations and eleven warnings. One vehicle was placed out of service. We had the aggressive driving detail grant funded on three separate occasions at three locations, resulting in twenty-five traffic citations for speeding. And part of my public service announcements reminder on May twenty-second is the police consortium test. Currently, right now, as of five eleven, there were two hundred and five applications, um, which is, uh, less than half of what we had last year. So if you know anybody, please encourage them to sign up on the police app dot com and they can register for all thirty-nine departments with one fee. April twenty-fourth was our drug takeback. The township building was very successful. And on May seventeenth at seven PM at St. Andrews Church on Swamp Avenue, uh, we will have our annual police memorial service to recognize the thirteen law enforcement officers from Bucks County that were killed in the line of duty. Um, so the public is invited and I encourage you all to attend. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief?
Uh, yes, chief, thanks for your report. Um, I, I noticed that we had a drug takeback day on April twenty-fourth. Do you have any idea of, uh, how much, uh, drugs were deposited in Newtown itself or Bucks County?
Yeah, there was, yes, there were at, on that particular day, we actually collected one hundred and sixty-three pounds of narcotics through the drive-through. And since the last collection, we totaled three hundred and thirty-one pounds from our, from our own box in our lobby. So, uh, that was very successful totaling four hundred and ninety-four pounds since this past event. Uh, from Matt Weintraub, uh, Bucks County is number one in the region for collections and we collected over ten thousand pounds of narcotics for that drug takeback.
Very, very good. Thank you. I, I just looked at some of the data for, you know, uh, non-fatal overdose, uh, and Narcan uh, administered incidents. And I want to thank the officers who uh, are involved in that and who administered Narcan because I think we ask a lot of our police officers and uh, to do that and save a life is, is very, uh, you know, very much appreciated. But I do notice a trend in, in twenty nineteen before COVID nineteen. There was only one each of a non-fa- non-fatal overdose incident and a Narcan administration for the whole year, one each of those. And in twenty twenty with the COVID nineteen, there were thirteen fatal overdose incidents and five Narcan uh, administrated, administered. Uh, and in twenty twenty-one, the trend still continues upward. Uh, where we might have, if the trend continues, fifteen overdoses incidents and I think twelve or thirteen, uh, Narcan ministers. So just because uh, I don't know how COVID nineteen is affecting, uh, people who are taking drugs or, but it's not, uh, having a good impact on that. And I do appreciate what the, what the police are doing. And I also was interested to see, it's not just, um, you know, uh, drugs that you can overdose on, uh, but also alcohol. I noticed in your weekly police activity for April thirtieth to May sixth, there were seven traffic stops that resulted in arrests for suspicion of driving under the influence of alcohol. And, uh, I think that's pretty, uh, pretty high. I've never seen that before. And, uh, also one citation for public drunkenness at six thirty AM on a Sunday morning on North Sycamore Street. It doesn't, uh, that didn't look like a very good week for people abusing alcohol. So thanks for your reports.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
Hey, chief, I have a, uh, kind of a weird question for you. Um, and driving around the township and the areas, Upper Makefield, uh, Salisbury, Yardley, I've noticed a, not that many deer in the area. Usually I see them off to the side of the road and so on. But I'm also noticing that year to date, there's been, uh, I, I, I like the, uh, the term auto versus deer. It's only been forty-six, uh, which is way less than two thousand and twenty year to date, which I, we, we still have a lot of time, but that was a hundred and forty-five. And, and I'm, I mean, not, not to make a joke or make light of it, but where the heck are the deer? Uh, I, I hardly see any anymore. Before you see them grazing on the side, even like if you wa- ride by the Wiggins track or something like that, you see, but, but I mean, I've hardly seen any. I've seen, I've seen a couple, I've seen a couple deers and maybe they're the same two deer that are running through the neighborhood, through the neighborhoods, but you know, I, I know it's a bizarre question, but, uh, is it reflective in car, auto versus deer that there are, there's not that many happening right now?
I, 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 I don't know, really. I, the bottom line is that the more, uh, building and construction and, and vehicles traveling the roadways, I don't know what they're doing.
Well, maybe they're going down to Florida for vacation. I mean.
From COVID last year.
Yeah, but take notice. If you guys drive around, take notice. There's, I, I, I haven't. Now, tomorrow there'll be like a thousand deer running around or something.
I noticed in my, uh, backyard, we face, uh, common property. Every day there was a herd of deer, about twenty deer walking through the common area. In the last month or so, I haven't seen any walking there anymore.
Yeah.
And a lot of them used to walk through our development. We have a whole herd here, but I haven't seen them either. So.
Maybe you bet, John, check with the EIT. Maybe they're not paying their EIT tax.
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, chief, I know that was a bizarre question and, uh, but it was just on my mind. I had to ask it, but so.
Problem, sir.
Chief, I have a question for you. Um, chief, I, I was, uh, I was curious about, uh, you reported that, um, based upon some detective work, we were, the detectives were able to locate, um, assailant that went all the way to South Korea. Is that correct, you said?
That's correct.
So we, we get a hold of this person, we're gonna bring him back and we're gonna hold him here in Newtown Township in the, in the law.
Not Newtown Township, uh, through the court system. If he's, uh, convicted, he'd be held at the Bucks County prison system or facility.
Okay, all right. Um, you know, that, that's, that's some extensive work. And, uh, you know, I spoke with, um, one of your detectives about a week and a half ago, and they're extremely busy. And, um, you know, it sounds like they, they're just following up a lot of leads and everything that just comes on their desk, but, um, they're very thorough. And from what, what I was explaining to me, I, I just want to say, you know, thank you for all your department does and tell your detectives to keep up the good work.
Will do. Thank you, sir.
Excellent job, chief. Thank you.
I had a real quick question. A well-built, what, a well-being check. That's one of the categories under miscellaneous. Uh, what, what, could you define that?
Somebody, uh, rolled it from a distance away, may call somebody and they're not answering their phone. They would contact the police and ask to do a well-being check to make sure they're okay. We would go to their property, make sure the property is secure, see if they answered the door. This will follow up. It may be at St. Mary's Hospital or something along that nature.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one other item on, under my report this evening. Uh, it's a consideration to authorize the execution of the DCT, DCED multimodal transportation fund grant for the two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the lower, lower Doolington Trail. Uh, so obviously, DCEV requires the execution of a contract with any grant, so this is requesting authorization to execute that contract.
We need a motion on this? All right, do I have such, uh, such a motion?
So moved.
No second?
Second.
Second motion, second. Any questions, uh, from the board on this?
Um, well, I had a question about the Lower Doolington project. If, uh, I can mention that on the old business perhaps?
Sure, no problem.
All right.
Uh, any, any question on this particular motion from anyone? From the public? Saying none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Uh, Mr. Lewis, I have a question for you, just looking at my favorite, uh, plan expiration dates. Uh, but I, I'm just curious, is everything, everything, uh, completed at Brixmore in regards to uh, the businesses, uh, taking residence, so to speak. I mean, I, I know, I know a popular one that everybody is waiting for is Bamba. But I, I don't see anything, not even a sign. Is, is, is everything okay as far as going forward?
Well, with that, with, with Bamba, uh, tacos and rum, yes, they are moving forward. They have submitted, um, building permit applications for the fit out. And we have just recently got a new application for a salad bar for the other end cap opposite of, uh, Iron Hill. So there's still some tenants moving in and some, some tenants have moved out, but, um, they are continuing to get businesses in there.
Okay, and that, that particular popular corner that we're talking about is going to be Bamba's, is the last place to occupy and.
Yes, on that corner where there's Iron Hill, uh, Bamba will be on the opposite, uh, corner from where they are located.
I, I've noticed that some businesses unfortunately have, uh, gone away. Do we get notified? I mean, I know that's, uh, I know that's, uh, something that Brixmore probably takes care of, but you know, some people always ask, hey, what happened to this? What happened to that? Do we ever get notified or do we just have to see it and then just say, hey, I'd noticed that such and such is not there anymore?
Yeah, we don't receive any notification from Brixmore when a tenant, uh, takes off.
Okay. That's all I had on the, yeah.
I had a question about Brixmore. I've, I've asked this a few times before about the traffic study that's supposed to be done. Is there any idea when that might happen?
I will throw that question to, uh, our engineer. Um, she's in direct contact with them regarding construction issues.
Yep. So, um, I had discussed with them probably a few months ago about some possible changes that they wanted to make regarding the Starbucks and Bank of America. So they are, um, working on possibly submitting revised plans for that. Um, so I unfortunately don't have a timeline on that. And then any traffic study would be done after that.
So, yeah, I, I did see the Starbucks, they had a, uh, I thought a kind of ridiculous plan where people would go around through the parking lot to get online at Starbucks as if anybody would actually do that. Uh, I don't know if that's their final plan or not, but I talked to several residents that, that said that was, it seemed ridiculous, but.
I actually did it, Mr. Mack. Um, and by the time I had come back around, uh, driving through the parking lot, two cars had already made the quick right and cut me off and beat me in line, but I felt good about doing the right thing.
Yeah, well, I could see arguments, uh, happening.
There's temporary signs. They seem to be temporary signs. Uh, they're not permanent signs. They're, you know.
They've had people directing traffic sometimes too. But.
Yeah.
It's bad.
It is. Thank you.
Anything else? For Mr. Lewis?
At least Starbucks is thriving. That's positive.
Yeah.
Can I get you coffee?
Absolutely.
Go to the one at Acme.
That's a good call.
That's true.
That is.
Go inside. You just can't sit down. You can't go in and pick up, but a lot of people just don't want to leave their cars, you know.
Right.
Well, they got that cafe now in Acme, um, yeah, beer. Just a thought, you know, if you want to sit down.
Can you drink beer there? You can't drink beer there.
I, I don't know that. I don't.
You can, you can actually.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah, well, like, to get their license, they had to have seating for food and.
They're seating there.
Buy a sandwich, sit there, have a beer and.
Get some sushi. I mean, hey, you got, you got the data.
No, Acme's a popular place. Okay, and anything for, anything else for Mr. Lewis? All right, moving right along, we have, uh, minutes, bills, list and reports. Mr. Mack?
Uh, my favorite time of the meeting. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one regular boss meeting.
Have a, uh, motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-one totaling two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board?
Uh, I noticed, uh, uh, I noticed a charge of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for six thousand gallons uh, of gasoline. And, uh, it looks like the, the price is going up from January. Uh, it's a forty, forty-five, forty-two percent increase in the per gallon price. And so price is already going up even before the pipeline issue. Any case, that's my comment.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero.
Uh, finally, I move that we make into fund transfers totaling two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents as per the bills listed May twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Uh, moving on to our second session of public comment. Anyone who has public comment, uh, just raise their hand and I will call on you. I see Mr. Diapril. John, you're up.
Hey, how you doing?
Can't see you, John.
Can't see me. There I go. Okay, uh, first I'd like to, uh, you guys, I don't know if you guys know it, it's, uh, Jeff Jim's birthday today. Video gold guy that tapes all your shows. Uh, so happy birthday. Another thing I, I should ask the chief, but, um, when they give out the Narcan, do they charge the guy they gave it to with the Narcan? Cause I'm sure it's a cost to the township. Anyone knows that, that, yeah?
Chief.
Like, uh, yeah.
We do not, we do not charge them criminally, John. Uh, the idea is to get them medical treatment. The Narcan is replaced by the county. It's part of our rehabilitation program to try to get them into treatment.
Okay, so the county's paying for it, which in turn is still a taxpayer. Okay, thanks for clearing that up. You know, yeah, they already mentioned, uh, about, uh, you know, uh, voting, voting on Tuesday. You know, anybody could come out, even if you don't like the candidates, vote for the questions. And, uh, could be important to a lot of people. And, uh, you don't know who to vote for, you know, I'll be outside the municipal building. This is where I vote. Yeah, talk to me. I'll tell you. I'll set you in the right direction. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing, uh, we have, uh, no use of an executive session, Mr. Sanders, tonight?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
We got old business, can I?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, too. I'm jumping the gun. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chief. I'm jumping the gun. Go ahead, John. Old business. I almost got out of here on some claims, but.
He's trying to break your record, but not gonna happen.
That's so fast there.
Leanna, you know, I appreciate everything you do, and I'm just trying to get a solid straight answer. I have the new, uh, application, permit applications for lower Doolington Road been submitted to the agency that's going to approve the permits. I forget what the name of that agency is.
It will be submitted as soon as we receive the reapplication fee, which I anticipate receiving tomorrow. Um, so that's. Sorry.
But the re reapplication fee, I'm I'm not, I don't get, I don't get it.
They, um, they charge a fee to, um, resubmit basically. So um, that's what we're waiting on. And then we'll make that submission this week.
So they have to charge you, they have to send us an invoice or you the Remington Burnet people. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how much is that fee?
The refiling fee is two hundred and fifty dollars.
And you've been waiting on that? And once you get it, you're set to send them?
Correct.
Once we, once we, once you pay that, you can send the application. It's a process that I'm trying to understand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we certainly resubmit, um, revised plans that address their comments along with a check for the reapplication.
And you just can't send the plan with a check without them first sending you an invoice?
No, they'll they'll reject the plans if there's no fee associated with it.
They'll reject money. Okay. Uh, I don't get it, but all right. And, uh, you said at last time that the agency has a certain time period which to respond to the application. Uh, do you know exactly what the time period is? I mean, how long did it take them to respond to the first time you submitted a permit request?
The first, yeah, when we submitted, it was in February. They have around sixty days to respond. They took about sixty days to respond. Um, we spoke to them regarding our resubmission and they anticipated that they would turn this review around in two weeks. But again, that's, that's, you know, they're verbal to us.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thanks for the information.
Any other old business?
Mister Chairman, I did have, um, a question probably for Mister Sander or Mister Lewis or both. Uh, we we discussed at the last meeting, reactivating the traffic committee. And it was suggested that we have a Newtown Township Traffic Committee. And I don't know, we're going to write, maybe work on a resolution to that effect. Just wondered what if there's an update or a status report on that.
Yeah, Mister Fisher, the the resolution was prepared, uh, by Mister Sander and it was circulated to the board for comment.
And will probably be on a upcoming agenda.
If the board's inclined to have it on an upcoming agenda, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you know then. At least I will.
Is this, uh, traffic impact committee just going to be for Newtown Township? Cause we used to have, we used to have a joint and I don't know. I think that was under discussion if anyone had contacted the borough if they wanted to be interested still in a joint, uh, impact committee. I I don't know.
Yeah, the, uh, Mister Chairman, the research that was performed by, um, Mister Lewis's staff revealed that there were, uh, two prior resolutions that, uh, one that created and one that amended the joint traffic committee with the borough, uh, and one that created and then subsequently amended, uh, the Newtown only uh, traffic committee. I don't believe that either of them are active. And what I, uh, did with the proposed resolution was, uh, basically kept the duties and obligations of the Newtown only traffic committee in place and provided for a Newtown only traffic committee. Uh, if if somebody wants us to approach the borough and see if they're interested in reigniting the joint, then I'm sure we can do that. Uh, but the resolution that we sent out to the board, um, uh, considers only a township traffic committee.
Gotcha. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Sorry, Mister Chairman. Go ahead, Mister Chairman.
No, I was just gonna say, I I think that, uh, maybe we should contact the borough since you know, it's all roadways go in between the borough and the township when people are traveling and traffic is impacted. So maybe we want to contact them to give them at least the option if they want to opt in or opt out and it would, you know, whether it's a joint or just the township. But I just think that, uh, township residents drive through the borough, borough residents drive through the township. So we're all affected by traffic patterns. Yeah, John, did you want to say something?
Well, yeah, I can see your point. And, um, I'm just, uh, concerned about adding con- con- you know, conflict in this committee between the borough and the township. There already is some conflict and I just thought, let's just have a Newtown township. Our police, uh, don't stop, uh, for traffic violations in the borough. So you know, I think it's more of interest to just stick to Newtown Township. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else want to chime in or, uh, I don't know. Why don't we? Why don't we go around? Kyle, what do you think?
Uh, I think obviously I think the focus should be the township. Uh, I don't see a problem with trying to reach out to the borough. Uh, I think it's worth it.
David.
But but if it's going to hold up the whole thing, then I say go with the township one. Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I'm just saying, let's, uh, let's give them an option and they may not want to do it anyway. So.
Right.
David, any opinion on this?
Nothing wrong with offering up, you know, a service or a joint, um, collaboration. But if not, then let's just move on as a township if if they're not willing to, uh, join in.
Understood. Dennis?
It's a, you know, we can reach out. We, I think we should give it a time limit though. And, you know, to in the in the next two weeks, but maybe the next meeting, we have have a decision on which way to go for sure, for certain.
Got you. All right, why don't we do that? Some, uh, Mister Lewis, do you want to reach out to the borough and see if they they'll be interested? After all, it is a free service. They're not paying. Thanks, Dave. You got that, huh?
Yes, he says, Smokey.
Uh, any, uh, any more old business?
I don't know if this is old business or new business or what, but there was a, um, um, a work session scheduled for this, uh, Monday at seven PM, which conflicts with the, uh, Bucks County Police Memorial Ceremony. So are we gonna, I guess we're gonna have to cancel that work session or have it at a different time during the day? I don't know if there's anything to discuss at all.
Usually at, uh, on Friday, Mister Lewis, uh, is aware if there's anything even going to be not be on the agenda. So if there isn't any items, we we, uh, we cancel the, uh, work session. If there is, we could always, um, push it back to seven thirty, giving us time to go to make, give our respects and get back to the meeting. It's always been that, uh, conflict of, uh, time. But as of now, do we have any agenda items, uh, Mister Lewis?
I do not right now, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Right. So again, by Friday, we should have a good grasp on whether we are going to have a work session or not.
Okay.
Okay, how about new business? Any any new business out there? Nothing new happening, huh? All right. Um, yes, someone.
All right, yeah, I didn't get a chance to, you know, for old business, just.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I apologize, um, but I just wanted to see, or obviously, you know, I've been mentioning this, but love to get back into the municipal building and see all of you gentlemen and Leanna and Mary and just, uh, get back to, uh, some sense of like togetherness. Um, but I know vaccinations are a thing, but I figured as we continue to progress in a better way, we should consider putting some level timeframe on what looks like going back into the building.
Yeah, I mean, as long as everyone on the board is comfortable, we're all vaccinated, we're all somewhat safe. I would still, I would still think that we have to keep the room itself at a distance and a certain amount of, because we don't know who's coming into that, uh, into the room. So uh, Mister Lewis would still keep it at the, uh, required distance as far as the chairs and how many people can be that can come in. So, um, but yeah, that's, uh, as we're all, uh, as we're all inoculated soon, I guess, uh, we could start having live meetings. David, I know you miss us all, but we miss you too. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At least, at least you told me, you know, cause before I didn't know. Appreciate it.
All right. You got it.
I just had a, um, I just had a comment. I I'm not against that live meetings, but I hope we might still be able to to integrate Zoom with that. I know that, um, Doylestown Township is doing that and maybe some other townships are able to have both live meetings and people participating via Zoom, since we might have limited attendance in the meeting room.
I I guess that's something for our, uh, our birthday boy at Video Gold to, uh, to work out. So, um, maybe, maybe there is something that can be done. I mean, uh, he'll, he would be the technology person on on that, uh.
Well, I hope maybe Mister Lewis can ask about that.
Sure.
And we want to check the costs of that as well. But I, 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 I don't mind doing it. I think doing it by Zoom would be a great idea if we can, if we can work it out. Uh, and and meeting in person with the Zoom, uh, continuing.
John Diapril, I know it isn't public comment, but I see your hand up. Did you have something to add?
Why would you want to incorporate Zoom? I mean, forever, even before you televised, uh, these, uh, meetings. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Yeah, uh, even before you televised these meetings, uh, uh, you know, it was always in person thing. Uh, I mean, I know we we've come a long way in technology and all that stuff, but, uh, why should you want to go against what we always did for, you know, over a hundred years, whatever, how long it's been?
No.
Have horse and carriage too. You could do that.
Yeah, well, John, you you gotta even stick your, you gotta stick your, uh, you could get off, John. Like you did, like you did last time. You didn't want to hear me. So you shut down your computer, left the meeting without even get permission. So that's you're a really a piece of it, John.
All right, all right. Hold on, hold on now. Okay, it it's a good, good point you bring up, John, and I guess we'll, we'll have to discuss it when the time comes that we even go live. Uh, but but no, I understand what you're saying. I've, uh, in the past, there's never been such thing as Zoom. So we never had this technology, but, uh, you have a valid point and we'll, uh,
Either have a Zoom meeting or you have a in-person meeting. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right.
I think you two gentlemen missed each other quite a bit too.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, I guess the the only thing left is, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Okay, without objection, uh, we are adjourned. Gentlemen, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Guys, be well.